I'd like to call this January 7th Council Work Session, the orders. As far as our fire chief, he has another meeting at 7:30.
I'll say that, a couple of things. We've scheduled a training for first responders involving how to handle responses with autistic kids, and that class will be for firefighters, EMS, and for the police department, and that's scheduled for March 25th. We're also working on scheduling a firefighter safety and cancer class, and that's scheduled for March 19th. I'm in the process of working on the statistics for 2018. We did see an increase in the number of responses for the fire department, and also the breakdown on the responses, sixty percent of the responses were either medical or to assist the rescue squad. So sixty that had to do with medical, and forty percent had to do with fires and rescue.
Anybody have anything for Herbie? That's it, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More about public participation. Anybody on this side of the room have anything they want to speak on? Anybody on this side of the room? Public participation. Okay. Mr. Pazza, you want to?
Good evening and Happy New Year. I have a couple of announcements from raising the bar before I get into the specific proposal about public art mural program. We had the regional director and the assistant regional director of the Department of Community and Economic Development from Pennsylvania visit us this week and took her for a tour of the -- they were here to see how we implemented the facade program. As you know, we got two facade grants over the last three or four years, and they were extremely pleased by how they were implemented, by not only the visual impact they had, but also how efficiently the money was expended and accounted for and so on. So we remain a prime target for future funding, and we're going to pursue aggressively everything that presents itself to us. You guys met with them at the Borough Hall, and they're very enthused also about the Riverfront Project that the Borough is undertaking. So we're going to stay in close contact with them, and as always, rely upon our state officials to make sure that we're getting more than our fair share of funding if we can. So I want to report on that. Also, if you remember, the last time I was here, Casey Waldron, we showcased a video that Casey Waldron did for us showcasing the town. The Visit Bristol Borough website has received thirteen thousand visitors since this year, thirteen thousand.
That's great.
And we're in the process of looking at the other analytics that Google provides as to how long they stay on the site when they visit it, which parts of the site they go to. So for the benefit of you and the public, I want to remind everyone that the Visit Bristol Borough website includes all of our activities, all of our festivals at the Riverfront, it includes things that the theater does, it has links to all of the restaurants, links to what we call quick-service food establishments, and also links to all retail establishments, not all retail. This is focused on tourism, so it's focused on the downtown commercial district, the kind of things you would come to visit the shop for specialty retail. So I want to encourage everyone in town to get their friends, to push that website out. It's Visit Bristol Borough, and the word borough is spelled out, visitbristolborough.com. Send that out there in any way you can, and I think it's going to reap some positive benefits. So that's it for that. Now, I was supposed to be accompanied by Ron McGuckin tonight, but he had some issues at the office that came up that he had to deal with urgently, so I'll be doing it myself tonight. But basically, we've talked before about the idea of initiating a mural project in Bristol Borough, and I want to talk to you a little bit about what the rationale is, what it is going to be in our conception, and what it's not going to be. The rationale is that it's just a cool thing to do. Towns all over America, small towns all over America are doing it, Yardley has some public art, Newtown has public art, New Hope, Borden Town, New Jersey, Wabash, Indiana, the town that won the Small Business Revolution the year before we did, has it, and so on. So what we propose, and I know that it could be risky, and public art means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, so what we'd like to do is have a pilot program, have you authorize a pilot program. The rationale is that we've said that art is one of the things that we focus on in a niche for Bristol Borough. We think our future lies in dining, entertainment, specialty retail, and championing the arts, and this is an important piece of that. So what it would be, we've contacted, we've selected three sites that we'd like to include in this initial pilot program. The first one is the site owned by, or managed by Paul Linehauser on Old Route 13. As you come into town, there's a beautiful side wall there in an art building, excuse me, on an outbuilding, that we would make our first site, and we've already gotten permission from him, if this is approved by the council, to move forward. The second is the tunnel under the Prospect Street-Garden Street Railroad overpass, the tunnel that connects the two streets. We think that could be, we have some mosaic artists who would like to do some things in there as well. Obviously, we have not received permission for that. We'd have to deal with the proper agencies with the railroad to do that. The third is the riverside of the Aqua Building. So if you're on a boat going down the river, if you look at the back of the Aqua Building, there's a beautiful blank wall that is just dying to be a canvas, so to speak, for artists. And we thought that if that said something like extorted Bristol Borough with the right kind of imagery on it, it would give boaters a good indication of where they were as they were going by. So those are the three spots that we anticipate as a pilot program. The general criteria, what we talked about when we met with the manager, the solicitor, and the council president, is that rather than create some cumbersome bureaucracy, the Center for the Arts, the Board of Directors of the Center for the Arts, would be the organization and the people who screen proposals for the art. All art would be done by professional artists who are part of the Center for the Arts, and it would be at no cost to the Borough, and paperwork would be drawn up about the responsibilities of the property owner to care for it in the future, or what happens to it when it deteriorates down the road. Once we agree on, once we, meaning the Center for the Arts, agrees on a topic or an image, we would then present it to the Borough Council for approval, and then we would move on. The target date is, what it would not be, there will be no commercial art, so this is not going to be any kind of artwork that's going to champion a business of any sort. It's generic, touting in a tasteful way the history and the culture of Bristol Borough. It will not be for children. This is going to be done by professional artists. We love to encourage kids to take part in mural programs, and we think the school is a wonderful spot to do that. You know, they have a nice map of the United States in the back of the Snyder Girardi School, and I think kids help participate in that, and that's a nice thing to be done. But that's not what this is. This is going to be exterior, where it's going to be supervised by the artist. So let me stop there and see if, what we're hoping is that, now, Mr. McGuckin is going to provide Mr. Salerno with some sample ordinances, and we're hoping that, you know, once you advertise, once you draft something, you advertise it, we could start aiming towards getting something going in the spring. So let me stop there and answer your question.
Just to bring council up to date, we had this meeting to discuss locations, to discuss, you know, what kind of art it should be, and my recommendation, and I'm going to throw it out to council tonight, is that we basically let them run with it because the art center, they have artists there and all to approve what they think should be there. I think my concern was the maintenance of this mural. If something's put on the train station or something that can get graffitied, who's going to be responsible to clean this up and to repaint it? It's not going to be, I don't want to fall back on the taxpayers, where we're out spending money to hire a painter to repaint this. So that was my recommendation, and that's when Bill said about the solicitor sitting down with their solicitor and drawing up some kind of an ordinance that covers, protects the Borough from this. But I don't think any of us sitting here have enough knowledge in art to determine what this mural should look like, and I think by letting them make these decisions and just presenting it to us would be the safest and easiest way to do it, unless somebody else has a different opinion on this.
Just Ralph, before you open it up, let me just comment on the graffiti part. As you know, the Borough belongs to Towns Against Graffiti, and they do a terrific job, and I'm on the Redevelopment Authority, and one of the organizations we fund from the casino money is Towns Against Graffiti. So when they made their last pitch for funding, I asked them about, you know, I know you can remove graffiti from garage doors and things like that, but what about art? And they said yes, they said that they're...
They respond immediately to us.
Yes, they do a terrific job. And there are coatings that you put on these things before, once you're finished, I don't know much about them, maybe Lou knows more.
Anti-graffiti coatings.
Anti-graffiti coatings that make it easier to remove graffiti. I also want to point out, if you recall, about a year and a half ago, we were one of the six towns in the five-county area selected to display public art from the Philadelphia Museum of Art. We had that art on display for a couple of months, no one touched it. So, you know, I think we need to think positively, I mean, there's certainly a potential there, but we'll deal with it.
So does anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah, I do. Maybe I missed it, but where is, so it's going to be, we'll come up with some generic artwork that would, you know...
Something tasteful, something subtle, and something that's not...
And this will be something that is decided by the board?
Well, ultimately by you, but to spare you looking at ten different things, we would come to you with a proposal. We would filter out, the Center for the Arts would filter out proposals, we'd look at different options, and then come to you with one and say, what do you think? If you say yes, we do it, if you say no...
And then the money that is going to go into these paintings, like, where's that coming from?
Will come from raising the bar, or we'll raise it, but nothing from the Borough.
Okay, nothing from the Borough, and the question is, if it's, is the reason why it would be decided or put through the Center of the Arts is because you guys are raising the money?
Well, I think you have to have, some agency do it, you have to have some handle on it, some way to make a decision, and I think people who are professional artists in the building...
No, no, I was just wondering...
I understand what you're saying, but I think that's the rationale, yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if there's somebody, okay, if there's somebody that's an artist that's not part of your group at, you know, the Center of the Arts, and they're interested, and they might be a better artist than what we have on board, is that, why is that not something or somebody that we're going to look at?
I think they're free to make a proposal to the group, but I would encourage them to, you know, what the heck, we've had an art gallery in town for three years, and we encourage people to support it, and if there's an artist in town who, you know, I would like to think that they would join.
Yeah, I'm not looking even in town, it could be outside of town, it'd be somebody...
I would like, I would prefer, I don't want to say I, we would prefer, to lean toward Borough artists.
Okay.
Or artists who belong to the group Artists of Bristol. I think it costs like ten bucks a year to belong to it, so that would be, you know, I mean, if somebody came forward that we're not thinking of, that, you know, maybe has roots in Bristol, right, but maybe doesn't live here anymore or whatever, they could...
I just don't want, I know, I just, I don't want it to be something where they're getting funneled into something because they have to pay to be part of the...
It's nominal, yeah.
Right, I understand, I'm just saying, I just wanted to, I just hope that it would be open to anybody who would think that they have a proposal, that's all.
I think it would be open to anybody that has a proposal.
Okay.
Anybody else want to speak on this issue?
And I see that you have three different areas where you'd like to do it.
Right.
How will you determine which one you'll pick?
Well, I think, I would like to go with the most visible one first, and that's the one on Old Route 13.
With 13, yeah.
Because you see it, you can't come into town without, you're going to ride right by it, it's a nice canvas, and the property owner's already said, yeah, I'm for it, and he'll light it for us.
So eventually, we could do all three if we were...
I'd like to do all three, I'd like to do all three this summer if possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, Bill.
Thank you, Dave. You know, we'd like, we talked about doing the railroad underpasses, I'd love to do something sports-wise, like under the overpass that leads to the ball fields and things like that, but there's so much leaching from the railroad and from, you know, the oils and whatever, that presents a problem. But let's start small, I mean, it's not small, it's significant, but let's start with a pilot program and see how we like it and revisit it.
Thank you.
But I think it's a progressive thing to do.
Anybody else have any questions on the art? So that's the process we're going to take. We're going to leave it up to your committee to weed out all the people that are interested, pick who you want to do it, and then present that drawing to Borough Council for approval.
Right, right. Now, just let me, let me reiterate, you know, we're going to have a hundred different ideas on what it should be. Our criteria is going to be, it should be something subtle, something that's not very obvious, like, I don't think we're going to put the Grundy clock anywhere, because you see the Grundy clock every day, they've got some overused things, something that captures a piece of the history of Bristol. The solicitor shared with me a really cool mural, maybe, Mr. Dillon, we can make copies of this and put it in their next packet. It was in the Borough News periodical from Lemoine, Pennsylvania, showcasing their mural, and it's a really cool mural about their history. So we'll see, we'll see what ideas we get.
So is everybody okay with the process? Okay, that's...
Thank you very much.
And you're, are you done? Because I just want to go back to a couple more things.
Oh, yeah, well, what I'm going to say is, we'll put Mr. McGuckin and Mr. Salerno together, and I assume then we would advertise an ordinance and adopt it, and it will not have any commercial aspect to it. You wanted to ask me anything, Ralph?
I just, I want to go back to the meeting we had with the people for the facade grants.
ED, yes.
Right. So it was a positive meeting, they were very impressed, like Bill said, with the Borough, with all the things that are happening in town, and when the funding was given out, how it was distributed, how there was records of everything, I mean, the bookwork is impeccable. And we did start talking about, you know, the concept plan for Down at the Wharf. So I think that's something that we really need to form a committee and start looking at, because, you know, there's money out there, we know it's a very expensive project, we're hearing anywhere it could be ten million, fifteen million dollars to redo this, and as Bill said, our state representatives, our elected officials have been very generous to Bristol Borough. So I think we need to focus on this drawing, council should get together and come up with ideas that they want this to look like, and really start looking, you know, moving forward, because, again, that's a concept plan, and it may not be anything that we want. So before we start spending money on something that we're not in favor of, I think we should, you know, decide that sooner than later.
We had something today, Ralph, that came out at the meeting, and I think we all know anyway, you had a representative from the East Coast Greenway here, was it last month or the month before? All of those things interact, and all of those things that you're associated with or that you're advancing increase the likelihood of funding down the road. The more agencies can see different projects coming together in a holistic way, like you have illustrated there, whether it's a bicycle path, whatever it is, it helps. So those things may not seem that important when you're just, you know, when you have a busy meeting and you're dealing with that, but coming together, it's extremely important. So I commend you for that.
So to get back to some of this stuff, like Bill said, we won the number-one project in the entire country for the dock project. I mean, that's all of an award to issue to a town like this, that's how impressed they were. A few months ago, I went to a meeting with the Redevelopment Authority, and as everybody knows, that prior to this year, we were not able to apply for a grant through the, for the casino funding unless it went through another township or Borough. And our state senator, Tommy Tomlinson, changed that law to allow Bristol Borough, Pendell, and a couple other boroughs that are in this donut hole to now be able to apply on your own for funding. So we applied this year for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-six dollars worth of grants. So the one grant was for the Basin Street and Mill Street Safety Improvement of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. The other one was for the Bristol Borough Police Department for body cameras of twenty-five thousand dollars. The other, the other one was for the, no, I'm sorry, the visual cameras to upgrade our TV station.
Here.
Better cameras here, twenty-five thousand. The body cameras for the police was fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. The Bristol Borough Police Command Vehicle, which is a new vehicle for the chief, of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. And Bristol Borough Wide Video Camera System throughout town, they want to add more cameras of thirty-six, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I just want everybody to know that Bristol Borough was awarded every single project.
Yes, all right.
The Redevelopment Authority, you know, for eight or ten years, we've been fighting to get Bristol included in the funding for the casino, and Tommy Tomlinson got it done, and John Galloway, and it was never a vote that I cast that was more enjoyable than that one giving us that money to do that work.
Great.
So I think, I think the people of Bristol need to know, and I think they know, but we need to remind them that these things are not happening by accident. You guys are doing a tremendous job in taking advantage of every resource that we can take advantage of, and that doesn't happen by accident, and believe me, and I think Gilmore can tell you, because Kurt's always telling me, he goes to other towns, and the town fathers and the other, and mothers of the other towns say, you know, how come we can't do what Bristol's doing? How come we can't do what Bristol's doing? So keep up the good work, and it doesn't happen without a lot of effort.
So Bill, they have, how many millions of dollars was people asking for, and they gave away, what, three point seven million?
Well, they always ask for double. Yeah, we usually get requests for double the amount of money we get to give out.
Right.
So it's really, I'm not going to say unheard of, but it's rare that a town gets, what did we get, about ninety percent? The only thing that we didn't fund was the soft costs for the project, so we got it all.
So, again, I mean, that's something that, you know, after this council's gone and there's other people sitting here, they're going to be able to apply for this money without begging people, can you, you know, apply, you know, to the Redevelopment Authority for this money? So, again, three hundred and some thousand dollars that the taxpayers don't have to pick up this cost, and everything on here is needed. So a lot of it's for the police department, but, you know...
Do we have a timeline on the, on the intersection work?
First, the hundred and seventy-three thousand, Gilmore's working. Amanda, you want to update us on that?
Yeah, I'll be quick. We know, I think we're still waiting on agreements for the actual funding, but once that's completed and we have the documents in place, survey should be pretty quick, and we could probably potentially have this out to bid in the fall and start construction. So I guess just pending the documentation, we can, you know, we're available to get started on it pretty quickly.
As you know, you have a year to expend the money, but if you're making substantial progress toward it, then you can extend.
Well, I know that the chief and the mayor's already working on, you know, the car and the body cameras, and I guess the police, Joe, you guys are working on where these new cameras are going to go. So that's going to be something that gets done probably, you know, immediately.
The police command vehicle, that'll be the first project, video cameras are next, and follow-up, the last being the police body camera, because that is going to require some, you know, have a lot of procedures and so forth, have to all be ready.
Right, and I'm sure Matt's working on upgrading our TV channel to HD, where we can now have it on, if you're watching a forty-five-inch TV, it'll be on the whole TV, so that's, that's nice, because our equipment's all...
You've got to look a little better.
Another ten pounds, right?
As far as the project on Mill Street, that's something we want to get moving on.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a great addition to the docks now down there, restaurants opening up, and all the pedestrians that are, you know, visiting the waterfront now, I think it's going to be a great improvement.
And we're also trying to parlay that into a fifty percent match.
Yes, we did, we applied for three hundred and sixty-five thousand through the PennDOT multimodal program to complete what we're calling Phase Two of the Mill and Radcliffe Improvement, so that's, that is what is on that board to kind of fix that entire intersection as a whole, so we're hoping to kind of do that quickly after, you know, the Basin Street work.
Okay, anybody have any questions on what we're doing?
I would just like to say that I just met with Kevin from the Riverside Theater. He was just trying to rack my brain about some ideas that he had outside of the council business, but they have some architects that they're working with to look to do some work in the theater itself, and they were talking about, they were asking a lot about this project and thought it was a great thing, these architects are from Cleveland, but I do know one thing that they had mentioned is that they were looking and hoping for some synergy with whatever happened on the waterfront, and what kind of ideas and concept plans we're looking at. So I just thought it was a good time to mention that there are a lot of places and people in that area that might want to have some input as well in what it could look like or how it could synergize with other things like the theater that are going on around there, so, just a thought about who we're soliciting opinions from, ideas from.
I think with the people that are in place right now, with our congressman, our state senator, our state rep, and our county commissioners, that, you know, we're in, we're in good shape. Okay, so that's...
Well, that's great news, thank you.
Okay, Greg, what do you have?
Just in reading about the, I think it was a finalized grant for the handicap ramps, I know I had brought it up before, but I just wanted to see if we had any movement on the two curbs that are Garfield Street, if you're walking towards the high school on Garfield Street and you're crossing Wilson Avenue, there is a handicap ramp on your right that would have you cross Garfield Street on both, but there is no handicap ramp going across Wilson. It's just a really awkward spot, and I'm just imagining that if there were any kids that needed to be able to cross the street to get to the school that has special needs, it would be a good spot to get them. So I don't know if that's on the list or not, just inquiring about that.
It's right on the corner, at the high school.
Yes, and across the street.
Yeah, I thought we hit all the ones that were going towards the high school.
It's not part of this county grant that we've got, but I think it'll be part of this year's Borough's effort.
Gotcha, because it's also, it's developing one of those, you know, like man-made foot tracks, you know, across the grass there, so it's, it's clearly a spot that people cross at a lot, so if we could...
You'll take a look at that, Amanda, please.
And, you know, I just wanted to compliment Mr. Dillon and, and the organization that deals with graffiti for taking care of some of the stuff at Mill Run, and, you know, there was a little tree back there that was taken care of, that's all I have.
Well, we just had a, had Ty go out to the school, had a lot of graffiti, they came out immediately and cleaned it up, so they're very good with that.
Yeah, they are. That's all I have.
Just the first, I was going to, is the Treasury Report, there's a couple things on there. All right, on the Treasury Report, the account number is one-nine-zero-one-nine, no, that's a lie, one-nine-zero-two-zero, Stevenson Supply Company, Plant Pumping Station, twenty-seven sixty-two, I guess that's just for maintenance, is what I'm reading.
I don't understand what you're saying, Tom.
On the Treasury... Yeah, Treasury Report, the number is one-nine-zero-two-zero, on the left-hand side, Stevenson Supply Company, Plant Pumping Station Maintenance, one-seven-sixty-two. Now, is that different than the sludge removal that goes on?
Yes.
Okay. The next one on there is one-nine-zero-two-nine, it's like five or six down, Gilmore Associates, Waterfront Development Engineer. When we say waterfront, are we talking about the program that we discussed just now at the beginning of the meeting? The waterfront development, or is that still dealing with the docks?
That's dealing with the plans for the waterfront development.
Okay, so these are the soft costs that, that we're paying for, that's not covered by any... by anything?
Right, it is the borough's responsibility at this time.
At this time, okay. And then another one with Gilmore, and that's a one-nine-zero-seven-two, Bristol Pike LLC, for thirty thousand, close to thirty-one thousand, what is that for? Which Bristol Pike LLC in reference to?
Again, that's part of an overall bill, but that is a development that's being evaluated and will be reimbursed by the developer.
Okay, but where is that at? What development is that, would that be? Where would that be?
That's the one at Route thirteen and Beaver Street, where they just demolished the, the structure, there's going to be development coming there.
Now, I've been hearing things in our ward, Dave, I don't know if you've heard them or not, but people are asking about the Septa train station starting to be a paid parking lot, and, have you heard that?
I had heard that, yes.
Mr. Dillon, have you heard anything about this?
No.
It was in the paper, I didn't know I read that.
It was in the paper?
Yeah, it was.
I don't get the paper. All right, so, it was in the paper, but is there a reason why, why wouldn't we hear about that if it was in the paper? Wouldn't they let us know something?
Obviously, they didn't let me know, I don't think they let anybody else know.
All right, so, well, I guess I just want to be proactive in thinking, what's going to happen if they're going to start charging, you know, residents in that area are concerned that, you know, if they start charging, then more people are going to be parking on the street, which, you know, we already have an issue of people parking, so, what, what types of things do you, can we kind of brainstorm and come up with to try to kind of counteract more people parking on the street? And is there something, I mean, would you be able to reach out to Septa and find out what their plans are?
Why wasn't it in the paper?
It was, honestly, I read it about a month ago, it said that, I don't remember exactly where I read it, but it said that there were just a few remaining parking lots in all of Septa's way that were free, and that they were hiking the rates in, in almost all of their existing K-lots, and that they were going to make the ones that are free, not free any longer, including Bristol Borough. It did, it did couch it a little bit, saying there were some possibilities that that wouldn't come fully through because they had gotten some pushback, but they were talking about the revenue that Septa feels like they need, and how much more money this would generate as a result.
They own the lot, so I don't know how we would prevent it.
I honestly don't remember, I think it was Inquirer where I read it, that could be right.
I saw the carrier, there were six lots, six parking, six stations that were affected by this.
Right.
And I think the only one that, that would be, the ones they just recently renovated would be free, and the Cornwells Lot, the park and, park and ride lot would be free. They were trying to, I don't know, they were just effort to move people around, so, I don't know.
Yeah. So, what do you, what do you think, Mr. Dillon?
Well, I'll, I'll reach out to them and ask them what their plans are, and we'll go from there, and I'll explain the concern, people in parking in the neighborhoods where we have limited parking to begin with.
Right, so, I mean-
Joe, there are a lot, not to interrupt, there are a lot of cars in there at night, I don't really see anything in there.
No, not really.
Not at night.
What are you saying, people that take the train there?
Yeah, that's it, people that take the train that, right now-
Talking about parking on the street.
They're going to park on the street, yeah.
Well, they can't park on Guardian Street because we restricted that.
In, for, was it a two-hour park?
They take the train, they're going to get ticketed if they leave their car there.
So, we have the rest of Beaver, we got Mansion, we got the other side where the post offices, people want to be, you know-
I, I don't know, but I'm saying, I mean, Guardian Street is protected.
Right now, it's protected, right?
Well, it would have to be protected.
Because now, the, no, when Guardian Street's going through, then the next street over, and the street before is going to have the same issue, that's what I'm saying, so I'm just looking-
Yeah, I mean, we'll write a letter to Septa.
Now, I, I know that we got the money for, from the casinos, which is great, so, I was hoping that there, you know, we could put some money away on the side, we could look into, not just look in, to start planning to renovate those basketball courts. I know that we talked about it, you know, we keep going around and around trying to, you know, think of different ways to, to get money to provide, but, you know, I, I think it's something that we need to do, or, you know, put into the borough, especially for the kids, make sure they have, you know, some things to do recreation-wise, so, I know that, you know, Ms. Cullen, I was hoping that she was here today so we could discuss it, I know that she was on board, you know, last year with it, so, I wanted to see what she was doing. What is going on with the Elm Street properties? Do we have anything in the near future that we're, that we're doing with them properties?
There's one more property, or do we buy the last?
No, there's still one more in Elm.
Oh, there's still one, I thought we bought the last one there?
We haven't agreed. We haven't closed yet.
Okay, when's that supposed to close?
As soon as the lender approves the short sale.
Okay, so, once that, right, we're one down, and that's pretty much closed, it means under agreement, so, what, what ideas, I'm sure there's something that we should, that we're talking about, right? That we want to do with those properties? So, what are, what are the ideas that we're going to have there? Ralph?
What is my idea?
Well, I mean-
I told you before, last time we talked, and, I mean, we must have discussed this about twenty times, is to eventually, and I think it's getting close now, because we don't want to force anybody else.
No, but that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's here right now, that's what I'm-
So, I think we sit down with the Redevelopment Authority, and we turn the ground over to them, and we give them an idea of what we would like to see there. I think the best fit for that area would be to sell the ground to Mill Run, and have them put up some more senior house, you know, living quarters where you could go from assistant living, and then into another special care, and then into a nursing home.
I mean, do we have any concerns about that project? I mean, that project has been going on for like, it seems like twenty years.
Well, I mean, they ran into a lot of structural issues, I mean, if you notice, they had to rip all the, the metal studing out, they were pretty much moving along, and, I mean, they are spending a ton of money in that place, according to, where's Amanda? Tell, tell Bill that-
Let her go.
But I think, before we do anything, I think, to me, that's the best fit for that area. No input, no impact on the school district with kids. Amanda, Mill Run, I mean, that project's moving along, we're just trying to figure out, you know, I was trying to explain to Mr. Devine that they ran into a lot of structural issues, and they finally got all the steel put in now, I think they do, I don't know.
I know they're working through some of their structural issues, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure if it's completed or not, but I don't know if we discussed the revised scope at all, that they're looking to possibly make some changes to their approved plan, so we're working through that with them to see what their next steps are and what their plan is. Hopefully, it's not, you know, much of a setback, if any, but I know they are still working through.
Oh, there's, there's scope that they're, that they want to revise, is it, is it going to be more of a downsize of what they thought before?
I'm not sure, I do need more information from them, it was my understanding that they were talking about not expanding the, the one portion of the building, so, I don't know if it's more of a phase plan at this point, or, or what their situation is, but I, I think they were coming in to discuss it at some point, so.
Okay, because, I mean, I just wanted, because if, if that's the case, if they're downsizing, I don't think that, you know, they would have much interest in using that property.
But if they, if they bought the ground-
Uh-huh.
-and they cleared everything out and planted grass-
Mm-hmm.
I don't see anything wrong with that, if they, you know, as long as we-
No, I don't either.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I have no-
We're not going to say, well, we'll hold the ground for ten years.
And I could be wrong, but from, from my conversations with them about their quote-unquote possible downsizing, is that it's more of a conceptual difference, it's, it's them thinking about different directions to go, they were going to build up, and with a lot of the structural issues that they've run into, I think they're just maybe getting a little wary about that, but that they're still interested in the building itself, and the lot, and everything around it, to-
That's all, I just had, I mean, concerns, I don't know enough about it, but it just feels like it's been going a while, they're always running into, you know, issues, they're always coming, and it seems, to me, it feels like it's something that's not going to get done, you know?
I know that Greg and Lorraine has been pushing for them to be at a council meeting-
Mm-hmm.
-to update council, and they were supposed to come in November, and then they didn't make it, and then Christmas came, and I think the manager emailed, what's his name, Greg?
Tlock.
Tlock, to try to be here this month, so, I mean, we'll get Jim tomorrow to email him again, and tell him we'd like him to be here in February, to give us an update on what their plans are. But to get back to Chestnut and Elm Street, if we purchase the last one on Elm, I think the borough workers are capable to go behind them houses and rip all the fences down and clean it up to make it look good, so they could just cut the grass without, unless we could find money to rip them down.
Mm-hmm.
If not, I think we got to clean up that area to make them look nice.
Yeah, what would be, what do you, ballpark, I know this is just a ballpark, but, I mean, you're in the business, Louie's in the business, how much would something like that cost to knock down, like, would we just tear that down?
I have no idea, I mean, first thing I'd do is see if there's any asbestos in them buildings. See, that's the thing with the Redevelopment Authority, they have the funding and all to do stuff like this, although they got to get their money back when it's sold, but, you know, let's just say it's a hundred thousand or fifty thousand to rip everything down, and there's an asbestos problem, we don't know what's in them basements, so, they could, they'll pay to have that done, and then recuperate their money on the sale.
Okay.
The other thing is, you know, we talked to Herbie about maybe doing a control fire, where they would practice on something like that, and you save some money on that, I know that, I don't know if it's the K-nine unit, or Joe, somebody's train, wants a train in there, I don't know if you're aware, Joe?
Yeah, it is, it's a police K-nine unit, you know, but we would be bringing these guys in, if we had a problem in town, so, coordination will, will exercise, plus the fire department would like to go in there, if they can't burn, they'd at least like to go in there and be able to do like search and rescue, and ladder work, and that type of stuff.
Take everything down.
That's a good idea, do something like that.
So, let's get back to this, Chestnut and Elm Street has, I mean, Elm Street has one property left, Chestnut Street has seven, there's two rentals and five owner-occupied properties, so, I think right now we're in discussion with the two people that have rentals, that are now interested in maybe selling these properties to the borough. Once that happens, we're dealing with five people that are owner-occupied, and I think the Redevelopment Authority can negotiate a better deal with them than we can, because we're only allowed to pay the appraised value on that property. We can't say, well, they want a hundred thousand, and our appraisal's fifty.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, and then tearing them down, I don't know, we're going to get the money for that.
No, so basically, we're just going to, we're, we'll just put it in the hands of the RDA, we got some ideas of how we can utilize the buildings in the meantime.
Right, but we'll, we'll tell the RDA, look, we're looking for Mill Run, try to work a deal with Mill Run. If that fails and council's not happy, then we go back to the RDA and say, put out an RFP, what, somebody will come back and say, we want to do residential, we want to do commercial, we want to build the seniors, who knows what they want to do? So, and then that's up to us to make that decision on what we would like to see there. Maybe it's all recreation, maybe we-
That'd be good.
-you know, find some money to do something like that, so, I don't know what it's going to be, but I think cleaning it up right now is the main thing, so the people on Jefferson Avenue don't have to deal with this, what's going on over there, and if Elm Street looks pretty cleaned up, I think we accomplished what we wanted to.
Okay. Mr. Dillon, we have a dumpster at the baseball field that is getting, I mean, I don't know if it's the borough workers that are using it, but it is filled to the brim and, and coming out, so we can get whoever's over there to get rid of it? I don't know if that was-
It's for the, the borough's use, but I think some people use it.
Boom. Now, the next thing, and I know, you know, this is not to, you know, spark a crazy debate, but when we talk about, or, you know, the, the sewer plant, we have, I'm, I'm hearing things that the sewer plant, are we, are we discussing, has anybody heard anything or rumors about us selling the sewer authority, the sewer plant? Is there any truth to that, Mr. Dillon?
There's discussion about selling and not selling.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's the, the, the members of the authority have a responsibility to, you know, look at all possibilities, and that's what they're doing. Many municipalities are selling their utilities, but it's just in a discussion stage at the moment.
Okay. So, this is something that we'll may be, may aware of if it becomes more serious talks, and we would have some input in that, right?
Is that something, sorry, is that something that would require our final approval if they made that decision?
I believe so.
Yeah. Which leads to the next thing, is that I feel like with the sewer authority, I mean, it always comes down to the council that makes the last decision, because it's, it's the borough that owns the authority, even though, you know, we try to act like it's a separate entity and all that, but it's, it's the borough that owns it, and, you know, as council members, it's us that makes the final decision on what we do with it. And, and the thing about it, which frustrates me, leads is that for the last year, Mr. Dillon, we haven't received anything in our packets with the sewer authority, and we've always done it in the past, so, what is the reason that we do not receive our packets anymore from the sewer authority?
Don't you receive the financials?
No, we used to get a packet, it was in, it was part of our plan, like, we get our Treasury Report, we would have a monthly thing with the sewer authority.
Meet the second Tuesday.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm asking as a councilman, why are we not getting it? By, why would it change that now you're telling me they meet every first Tuesday of the month, or whatever they do? I'm not asking to go to the meeting, I want to know, why are we not getting that in our monthly packet? When we used to get them every month?
I, I don't know, I mean-
I wasn't for you, I was for Mr. Dillon, I'm asking a question.
The financials are in there.
No, no, I, the reason I'm asking-
Whatever packet you deliver, deliver them one.
No, no, they're very-
They're very extensive, you know, on the-
Listen, listen, I have, the reason I'm asking again, is because to me, when I, when I'm not getting something-
You think something's wrong?
Yes, I do, I, I always think there's a reason why I'm not getting it, right? And the reason I believe that I'm not getting it is, because when we have a discussion, now here's another question, so, when we discussed a, a time before about a raise that would, that would be going to somebody, I heard that, you know, that we don't have to vote on it, it got kiboshed, but they could just do it through the sewer authority, so I'm going to ask you a pink blank, Mr. Dillon, how much money do you make in total of all of your duties as manager of being in charge of Iraq, the council, and the sewer authority? How much do you make now?
For the sewer and the general fund, general government and all that, I would say the same amount that I made when I started fifteen years ago.
Okay, the same amount, so, what you're saying is that you didn't receive- So what you're saying is that you didn't receive any raise that you would've over the last two or three years, that you received a raise in?
Well, I think if it was recommended that I get a raise and you voted against it, right?
Yes, I did vote against it, yeah.
His salary's the same.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, there's no change.
That's what I'm asking.
It's in the budget. His salary's in the budget.
I understand, but because there's a lot of ways to, you know, to finagle and move things around so you could, you know, make things look.
Must have like a lot of corruption going on in your life. That you think like, I mean, he would tell you if he had a raise.
He would tell me.
But I'm saying if the council would have to vote on his raise.
Wait, you don't think that it's odd at all?
Why don't you just tell us what you're.
Why don't you be quiet?
Why don't you just tell us what you think?
How about that? How about, how about you wait until we ask for your opinion because you're a solicitor? And then you can.
Cause you're wasting our time.
Right now, I'm not asking.
You wasted our time.
It's not your time, this is the borough's time.
You're wasting our time.
All right. How, explain to me how.
Tony, it's a shame, listen.
Well, I'm just, he wants his butt in, you wanna, listen, you wanna give him free rate like he's a councilman?
I think everybody has a little.
No, no.
Problem with the way you're going after the manager.
It's not going after the manager.
You asked him a question, he answered the question and I answered it.
Wait.
He gets the same salary as he did when he got hired here.
And I was asking you a question.
Okay, don't try to embarrass the guy, all right? Don't try to sit here and make him look like he's getting money that he's not getting for running the rink and he shouldn't even do it.
No, he shouldn't.
If it was me, I would say no.
Okay, well, fine.
And I would have this town pay to hire a manager for the sewer for a hundred thousand a year. Go hire a manager to run the rink.
You do run the town, I don't know if you know that, you do.
I run the town.
You do.
I do run it.
That's what I'm trying.
And you got a problem with that?
I don't.
Okay, so.
I have a problem.
Don't sit here and try to belittle our management.
Number one.
You know, I, I'm not gonna sit here and put up with your [BLEEP] trying to belittle the town.
Number one, that's inappropriate language.
No, I don't care if you like it or not. He told you what his salary is, he doesn't get any additional money for anything.
We're moving on.
Okay, so move on to your next question.
I'm gonna ask you a question. So the question was, you said that I must have a lot of corruption in my.
Well, I mean, you think everybody's corrupt, Tony?
No, I don't, I don't think anyone's corrupt.
You know, when I don't get a paper, when I don't get a sewer paper, I think something's wrong. Like in my mind, there's something wrong because you didn't get a packet. All you gotta do is call the borough and say, Mr. Dillon, you think it's possible to give me a sewer packet every month? And it would've been resolved.
No, because it wasn't, because that's what he told me the last time. They had meetings every Tuesday of the first Tuesday of the month.
What's your next question?
No, but I'm just gonna finish this, you had a chance to talk.
And I'm here, it's as long as you want.
So the question I have is this, if you don't get something that you, that you've been getting all the time.
But doesn't have to be something wrong?
Did I say anything was wrong, I didn't, no, it is.
Said in my mind, I think there was something wrong.
Okay.
Since I haven't been receiving it.
Yes.
That's what you said.
That is.
Okay.
You don't feel that way, you, if you're not getting something? So if you're not, all right, so if you're not getting your check, all right, you're not getting your check for the burden, it's all a hundred and seventy-eight dollars or whatever it is. You don't get it for a couple of months, don't you think there would be a problem? Wouldn't you say?
I would do his call here.
I did, that's what I'm saying, I did that.
To find out what's wrong, that's all.
That's what I'm saying, I did that.
I wouldn't sit here in a public meeting and try to embarrass a guy that's put his life into his job.
Listen, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Dillon, so don't turn it.
Night.
But you do, you have respect for everybody.
You could've asked the question, Mr. Dillon, has your salary changed since you've been here? And his answer was no.
Okay.
Okay?
That was the answer, you're the one who jumped in.
Oh, cause I don't, I don't like the fact that you're trying to belittle somebody.
I wasn't, number one, you're the king of belittling people, I don't know if you remember this, you're the king of it.
Come on, move on.
You've done it, so what I'm saying is you agree.
Come on, that's.
That is, Mr. Dillon, again, we're discussing right now.
You're just making a lot of noise, Tony.
Yeah, but.
Elections coming up in May, I know the election's coming up in May. It's stay focused, all right?
All right, stay focused, all right, you got it. Number one, number one, has nothing to do with the election because I have no desire to run it because it has nothing to do with the election.
I'm sure you'll run again.
How much would you?
I hope you do.
Would you like to make a wager?
I hope you do, because I love you sitting right in that seat.
Can we move on?
Whatever, whatever thing you'd like. How much would you like?
All right, come on.
I'll do, let's do.
That's a small.
No, fifteen hundred.
Come on, Mr. Dillon.
Would you take that back? For fifteen hundred?
Come on, let's, let's move on, I don't have one.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Gerard, you don't wanna finish with that.
I was finishing, we were having, listen, I understand. He brought up, I'm answering the question, he said he wanted to make a bet, I gave him a bet, I waited for his response.
All right, let's, let's, let's do something for the taxpayers.
This is for the taxpayers, that, again, it leads again to what I'm asking. I'm asking for the taxpayer.
We got a meeting tomorrow.
Because when I don't get a packet, because when I don't get a packet for a few months, I did with Mr. De Giuseppe, I asked him, though, I made a phone call, I talked to Mr. Dillon and he told me you could go to the meetings on the first Tuesday of the month or whatever. And I'm saying that I'm not happy with that response.
And I would've said to him, Mr. Dillon, I'm not happy with that response.
Okay.
What I would like you to do is give me a packet every month from the sewer authority.
Okay.
That's what I would've did. I wouldn't have did it on this floor tonight in a public setting to try to belittle somebody.
But let's talk about.
That's the difference between me and you.
No, that's not the difference. The difference between, the difference between you and I is this, right? Here's the difference, is that you had the ability to tell them what you want and you get it. See, I don't have that. I don't have that freedom. What I get is file a write to note. How many write to notes did you file? Ever, right? Because you get all the information that you need.
Something I usually get it.
Yes, I don't.
Okay.
So that's the reason I'm saying it. It's not to belittle Louie because I think he does an excellent job. But what I'm saying is, I'm asking questions for the taxpayer because when something like that's happening and I'm hearing, you know, that the sewer might, the sewer authority might be selling and we haven't got a packet, to me, there's something, I wanna know more, that's all. That's all, I mean, it has nothing to do with belittle.
That's a legitimate question.
I think you were told that the council's gotta vote on the sale, so, you know.
Right, I understand.
Nothing's gonna happen until you have a chance to vote on it.
I agree, but I'm just. You're only asking questions, I mean, these are just questions that I'm asking, it's not to belittle anybody. And I, for everyone to get so defensive about it, just again.
No, I got defensive about his salary.
Right, it's only.
He answered the question.
And I, and I didn't continue on with it.
What else do you have?
That's all I have.
Mr. Gerard.
Um, since the, uh, real quickly, uh, since the, uh, people of Bristol own the sewer plant, Mr. Dillon, um, would that be a voter referendum where, where, where the voters would have to agree to sell that? Just, just a hypothetical question I wanna ask Mr. Salerno, maybe he could answer that question.
No, the, the authority owns the sewer, not the citizens. The sewer authority owns the sewer.
So the authority itself could make that decision without council?
No, council has to approve it.
So they don't come?
But, but, but the people, the people don't get a say in besides their representative?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. De Giuseppe. I couldn't make the, uh, November, uh, budget meeting, uh, had to, uh, do a favor, last favor for one of my friends and, uh, I wanted to thank Mr. Ricchio for reading my letter. And also I was appreciative of, uh, Mr. De Giuseppe, uh, to say a few kind words about people who owns pets. However, what I did not like and I strongly disagree with is Mr. Catroci's two comments about people who don't want to raise taxes. So if someone doesn't like what I'm gonna talk about, they can thank Mr. Catroci for winding me up. I think that what the majority of council has forgotten is one of the golden rules. In order to receive, you have to give. Can anyone on the majority tell me or explain to me how in Mr. Devine's seven years and Gerard's five years and Mr. Ricchio's three years, not one, zero of our candidates that we put forth to serve on a committee was given the opportunity to serve by this majority?
Say this again, Dave.
Can anyone on the majority tell me how in Mr. Devine's seven years and my five years or Mr. Ricchio's three years, not one, zero of our candidates that we put forth to serve on a committee was given the opportunity to serve by this majority?
Dave, didn't we serve on a committee together?
Yeah.
Or I mean, didn't we serve on a committee for the public works contract together?
I think he means candidates, appointments.
Like candidates.
He's talking about boards, what, board and board.
Okay, I thought you meant you.
Fourth quarter.
I got you. I thought you meant you.
I thought he meant him to.
I thought you meant you were not giving me the opportunity to serve on a committee.
I'm talking about candidates that come up to serve on committees.
That didn't work out too well for you either, the committee that you're on.
I mean, that's not true.
Okay, well.
He did a very good job on that committee, he worked very hard on that.
I know, but he shoved it up his. The candidates that were put forth are, are qualified, the good guys, good, good, good women. Um, but it just, it just like, uh, it's like running into a wall, you know, just boom. Not, we're not gonna do that, so. All right, I just wanted to point that out. It's been a long time, seven years there, Mr. Devine, five years from me, I got zero. Okay, on finances. When I have to make a decision concerning my fellow Bristolians, I always ask myself these simple questions. Tomorrow, can I justify my decision? Can I defend it? On finances, I have three examples and more, but for now, three. Number one, the Grundy powerhouse that was tore down is now a parking lot. When I found out that this building was sold for one dollar, I asked council for six months to save it and have a developer rehab it. I made one phone call to Benar Mazanke, he attended a council meeting and in public stated that he would rehab it and not tear it down. I also found out that Eric D'Amidio was interested in that building for a dollar. If anyone doubts what Benar can do with a dilapidated building, they need to tour the canal works. There was a chance that today we could've had a beautiful restored historic building with a good tax base compared to a parking lot. If after six months it was deemed not feasible, I would've had backed the majority one hundred percent. The majority gave me nothing.
Hey, can I ask you a question real quick before you finish with your reading? I don't know if this is true, maybe somebody, is it true that Mr. Baumwarter had that building up for sale?
No.
Was it ever up for sale?
I, I asked him point blank because you had brought it up before. I asked, I spoke to Fred Baumwarter and I said, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
I said.
And he said no?
He's, he, he almost laughed me out of, out of the room that I was talking, he thought it was that funny, he said he has.
Oh, okay.
Number two, the sewer plant. Gilmore engineers told council the plant needed three million dollars for repairs. Customer store rates would double. I suggested we bring in Dick Smith and Connie Patel, trust but verify, to see if these two men who know more about our sewer plant than anyone I know, agree with Gilmore. For example, if you're doing a major project on your home, don't you always get a couple of estimates? If the majority of council had done that, then I would've supported the majority of decisions one hundred percent. Again, the majority gave me nothing. Number three, the police contract. Mr. De Giuseppe asked me to be on that committee, I agreed. Mr. De Giuseppe, Mr. Dillon, Mr. Salerno and myself worked hard on this. It was agreed to by Mr. De Giuseppe, Mr. Dillon and myself that for the protection of Bristol and for the financial stability in the coming years, ten full-time officers and eight part-timers were where we needed to go. At the time, there were fourteen full-timers. And when they asked how we would get to ten, we stated that as a full-timer retired or went out on disability, he would be replaced with a part-timer. No layoffs, just a slow, steady process towards an affordable and efficient police force. After the contract was signed, four months later, the majority wanted to hire a full-time officer. I tried to explain how the contract worked and how we should stick to its guidelines. Two council members said there was money. When asked where, they had no answer besides someone said so. Who? No response. The majority hired a full-time officer. Again, I asked the majority why. Two again said they thought they had money. I asked another council person, their response was, I voted with them. I asked another council person, their response, I voted with my team. My response to that was, what about team taxpayer? To their credit, one council person had a legitimate response. Their response, I thought by hiring a full-timer that would cut down on the overtime and the money would balance out. That makes sense to me, although that's not how it worked out. I thought we had money, I voted with them, I voted with my team. These responses were ill-informed and misguided. Again, the majority didn't listen and stuck a knife into that contract. So here we are, local service tax, earned income tax, possible layoff of two police officers. The majority makes this decision easy for me, no. Again, if the majority had just tried, and I'm not asking a lot here, six months on a building that's been empty for fifty years, a second opinion on the store plant? Follow the guides of, follow the guidelines of the contract. I would be backing this council one hundred percent because then I could look my constituents in the eye and tell them, hey, we tried. They didn't even try and they're gonna do the same old, just raise taxes with two new taxes. I, I have reasons, Lou.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into.
I don't like the cowardly act, I wanna get re-elected.
Dave, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into like a major discussion about this.
Why, why can't, why can't council people just say, hey?
Let me ask you.
Gerard's got a different opinion, why does it gotta get personal all the time?
Why is it personal?
Dave, let me tell you something. I'm one of the guys that agreed to hire a full-time cop. And if you recall, we just had a shooting down on Bass Street. It looked like the, you know, it was, we're coming into a summer where there could be turmoil. We were paying tons of overtime and it would've worked except that two guys came off of disability that weren't expected and one guy is still not able to work out on the street. But this isn't a decision the council made or anybody in the borough made. This is a decision that's made by people out of our, our borough. The insurance companies, the workman's comp companies, this is not something you can control. And for you to just pick, handpick out stuff, you know, oh, we're costing the borough money. How about what you and Tony are doing to us? When you're suing the borough council and suing us.
Yeah, 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 how's that working out? How's that working out, Lou?
And suing us personally.
How's that working out? When, when you wanna give borough taxpayer money to, without giving bids out? How, how's that, how's that one working out?
Well, how did it work out for the past twenty years? The guy's been doing it the same way for twenty years, Dave. Don't say you just like, we contrived this issue.
But you have to be careful, be careful. If he's been doing it the last twenty years, you're gonna, you could get in a minute predicament.
Family's been doing it for the last twenty years.
All right, let me, let me just tell you. First of all, the power plant. If the developer came and first of all, they couldn't develop, you couldn't afford to fix it, even if he said he could. But if he did, how much taxes you think it would've generated for the borough?
I, I have no idea, Ralph, it depends on, on, the ideas that Benar comes up with. And as far as I'm concerned, he, he's one of the best. I mean, the canal, the canal works building is unbelievable.
Nobody's disputing whether he does good work or not. What I'm saying is.
I, I don't know what he would, I don't know what he would've put in there.
It was an astronomical amount of money to fix that building.
Well, well, you never gave him the chance.
If he wanted to do that building, he had more than one opportunity.
He never knew it was four dollars.
Okay.
It wasn't four dollars. Stop, stop mistating the facts.
The sale price was a dollar plus the owner had to take it down at his expense, which was four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay?
But Benar would've bought it for a dollar and would've stuck three million in it, fixed it.
Three million.
So listen, again, Mr. Salerno.
Dave, you've been.
I, I don't, I, I.
Get the facts right, Dave.
You get on, you get on me, and you're not asking you a question, sir.
But you missed the facts.
Listen, when I ask you a legal question, speak up, until then, you are not a council member.
Okay. Well, as long as the council president allows me to speak, I'll speak, when he tells me not to speak, I won't speak. But you got to get the facts right, that's all.
Yeah, what's the difference? Okay, Fred, Fred, Fred put a half a million into tearing it down, Bernard would have, it doesn't matter. What's the difference? It's empty for fifty, what would that, what would that have hurt?
Well, you said we lost tax money.
Wait, wait a minute, wait, there was a forty by forty sign up there, thirty-eight luxury condos coming, get yours while it's getting's good, five years ago, but then, now, all of a sudden, it's, it's no good.
And those guys got through the process, and they realized they couldn't do it.
No, that's not, Lou, they got, it's not what happened, the market, the real estate market was terrible, that's why it didn't work. Let's not make up-
Not true.
That is true.
All right.
That's the truth. The real estate, the real estate market was good, it would have been fine.
It wouldn't support the expense of doing that building, I know, you know how much those guys paid for that building? Do you know how much they paid for it? They only paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it.
And this guy got it for a dollar, that's a good deal.
No, but they-
No, that's a good deal.
They got it, and they got their money.
Didn't you like to get that for a dollar?
No.
No, not if, no, not if you're going to tear it down.
If somebody bought it for a hundred and fifty thousand, you get it for a dollar, is that a good deal?
No, it's not. They couldn't do what they wanted to do with it.
All right.
And they sold it back to-
How about if you get something for twenty-five thousand?
Look, Tony, you know, my, my point is- Bernard knew it was for sale, Bernard never came in, and, and, and everybody makes it sound like-
No, he did, he came in at the end.
Look, you didn't know it was there?
For a dollar, no, he didn't. No, I didn't know it was for a dollar. That's the other point.
Dave, do you have anything else?
Everybody has different opinions.
Right, okay.
Okay, you're a roofer, didn't like that one, you're getting spoon-fed information, didn't like that one. People who don't vote for talent, it's a cowardly way out, did not like that one. People who do that want to be re-elected, did not like that one. Oh, there's only five of us up here that respond, didn't like that one either, okay? So let's keep it professional, okay?
Here's what, here's-
I think we tried to, Dave.
Dave, here's what's really amazing, you know, you walk in, you sit down, you want to talk to people, you want to, like, and then you come out here, and you want to slam people.
Well, I get slammed, you know me.
But I'm saying, there's other ways to do things, okay? You want to come in here, hey, anybody want something to drink, how you been, what's going on, shaking hands, then you come out on, then you come out on the floor.
I didn't say it about you.
He didn't say anything.
There's only one person that says he wasn't going to raise the taxes, that was Dave Gerard.
Well, you got a guilty conscience, don't blame me. I'm talking about people's attitudes. If people are going to say, you know that, you know our contracts go up every year.
No, let me, here's the funny thing about it, I'm going to make a statement.
Louis, what do you have?
Can I make a statement, Lou?
Can I make a statement?
Is that he's the most honest and honorable guy that we have up here, including myself. So for you to say that he has a guilty conscience, he doesn't. He's the most honorable guy that we have up here.
Louis, what do you have?
He may be, but I didn't mention his name.
So?
I didn't mention anybody's name. I just said, can I be public, that expenses go up contractually for us every year, and our tax base doesn't go up, our tax, tax base, if anything, wobbles.
We haven't raised taxes in how many years?
We can't, we're not allowed to.
Dave, so, I don't understand what everybody's thinking.
That's not entirely true, though.
No, it is.
No, we could adopt the taxes.
We could raise it, but-
We could adopt those local income taxes, and the ones that-
Well, that's not raising, that's adding taxes, that's not raising.
Adding tax is raising tax.
No, it is, it is.
No, no, it's adding the new tax.
I mean-
Raising is what you could do legally, that you could tax the- If we added a tax, would people's taxes go up?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Oh, so you, it's semantics, so it's just about, what you want to call it is, right, there's nothing that, we got to go to the, we got to go to the county every year to get an extra five mils, we can't raise the taxes anymore, right?
Those taxes, we cannot, you're right, but there are options on the table that we do not adopt.
Because they're not raising, they're adding taxes.
Because we don't want to, because we don't want to do it, because nobody wants to raise anyone's taxes. It's no one's goal, it's no one's objective, nobody wants to do that. What we were talking about during that meeting was, that times are going to continue to be tough when we're not even here.
So what we did-
And that, these are things that I'm willing to say, look, this might be a difficult decision that some council has to make at some point in time. I don't want to do it, and I will hope, hopefully, every time I'm up here, we'll never have to do it.
Right, but-
Someday, someone will.
Well, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is, do you agree that there's other ways, like for instance, when they doubled our sewer rate, right? When the authority doubled our sewer rate, that was pretty much a tax increase, don't you think?
I mean, if you want to talk semantics-
Yes, I do.
Okay, I mean, that's, I mean, that's not actually a tax.
No.
What we're talking about is actually a tax.
Oh, it actually, it is.
It's called a tax.
Yeah, did your bill go up double?
It's called a tax, that's a sewer bill.
Did your bill go up?
Yes, my bill went up with everyone else's.
Double.
That's, that's weird.
Dave, are you done?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Catroci.
I'm done.
Eddie. Eddie, Eddie.
I just want to go on record and say that I'm really upset that people up here want to blame other people for the dumb [BLEEP], but yet, but that's okay, it's a little word, they can bleep it if they want to.
I don't mind.
But at the same time, there are two council members that are suing some of us for doing what we thought and still think was right. So don't cry about what we do and don't do, when you're sitting there, using the taxpayers' dollars to come after us, okay? And that's how I'm going to leave it, and I don't want to even hear what you have to say. I already heard everything you wrote on your little paper.
How's that working out, Dave? I heard it's funny to get a lawyer.
Now, on another note-
You're trying to get a lawyer to defend you.
Pico is hosting an open house on Wednesday, January ninth, from six to nine, six to eight, I'm sorry, and this is for the Firehouse Fifty-One.
Fifty-two.
On the Regency Room, so that they can meet with the residents in the area to discuss what findings they have, and what their plans are in the future. So if anybody in the West Ward is interested, that is this Wednesday from six to eight. On another note, I'm very happy about the way Luke Will looks, because it's empty, and nobody's there, and I hope it stays that way, if we're going to bring back what they had.
I think they're going to rip it down.
Good. But, and I believe the diner is having an open house to celebrate their renovations Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, right? So on that note, I will continue to vote positive for what I think is right, I will continue taking the safety of our residents into hand, if it means hiring a police officer, whether people believe we need it or not, and we'll cross that path when we have to. Thank you.
Mayor.
Hi, Bill.
Jim, you have anything?
No, just, there's three items that definitely I need council to vote on, if they like to do it tonight, or wait till next week, it's up to them.
All right.
The first, we received the contracts from the RDA dealing with the casino funding, there's five resolutions dealing with those five projects that-
That's number two, right, Jim?
That's number two on that list. The other one would be, the second one would be, consider adopting the Wharf, Pier, and Dock spending policy relative to the Endowment Fund. This is the, basically, the funding from the Grundy Foundation, which will total, in time, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on the investments, the interest income, the investment income can be used to continue to maintain the Wharf, Pier, and Docks. Again, this has been presented by the Grundy Foundation to council. And the last item would be to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of an application, designation of an enterprise zone in Bristol Borough, this would continue the efforts of getting facade grant funds and additional other types of grants, so.
Mr. Dillon, was I agreeing that right, when it said it was the whole, the whole town would be designated as an enterprise zone?
Uh-
Because there are certain parts of town that already are, right?
Yes, well, this is just basically an updated, proposed resolution that we've received from the, the RDA, this is what they propose.
So you're asking two, four, and five to be voted on tonight, so let me finish, and then we can get back to that. Do you have anything else?
No, we're opening bids tomorrow on the handicap curbs, based on the grant we received from the county, but we may have to delay that vote for at least a month, and hopefully it'll come in low enough that we'll be in position to recommend that you award the bid, so. Other than that, Mr. Salerno, you have anything?
No. I don't have anything. All right, so we need a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, to add three things on the agenda. Motion by Mr. Catroci, second by Mr. Pez, any questions or comments?
Yeah, the only question, is this in lieu of next week's meeting, that we're trying to get this done, or?
Well, I don't know if we have anything for next week, but you have something special you want to speak about next week?
No, I was just, I was just wondering, because we got two other council members that aren't here, so.
All right, so this motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, so number two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt five resolutions dealing with the projects to be funded by the casino funding.